Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Planning Commission, we are going to start off with a pledge of allegiance by Greg. Greg, can you lead us and everybody can mute themselves?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Annette, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Karanta?
Here.
Commissioner Keith?
Here.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Here.
Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Here.
And Commissioner Hughes has an excused absence, so we have six present and one absent. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Seconded.
A second. Okay.
All right. Commissioner Anderson?
Hi.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Commissioner Karanta?
Yes.
Commissioner He?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Let me chair person.
I'm sorry. Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yes, okay.
Motion passes six zero.
Great. We'll go ahead and move into the public comment portion of the meeting, which is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on a matter that is not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record before making a presentation. And is there anybody that would like to make a any comments? I don't see any attendees. Are we the only ones in here?
Yeah, I don't see any either.
Okay. Well, then, if that's the case, we'll go ahead and close public comment and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll approve.
I'll say it.
Hey.
Mariah, do we know that the attendees are able to get in? I just hope that's not the case. Remember that happened their last.
I was gonna try and log on from my phone just to make sure it works, so I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Just want to make sure there's no error or glitch there. Okay.
Okay, I'll do a roll call for the consent calendar. Commissioner Karanta?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner He?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yeah.
And Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
So motion passes six zero.
Okay. Kelly, have you had a chance to see if you can log in?
Not yet. I'm almost there.
I might just pause for a second until we make sure that people can actually attend.
I think we need to get a better microphone because every time she says Commissioner Keith, I think she's saying Kane.
Well, I'll try to enunciate better.
I have nothing against you, Annette. It might be my earbuds. I don't know.
Okay.
Have been, have people been enjoying the Olympics?
I caught a little bit of the curling at a restaurant I was at. And that was, that was about it.
Seems like there's a lot of curling.
Yeah. Still don't understand.
Curling is so funny to watch.
Yeah.
I was able to get in through my phone, so I think everything's looking.
I can see we have two attendees now.
Looks like we have a, yeah, one with a phone number eight oh five six one oh eighteen oh four. So somebody's in there. That's good. Hopefully that's our applicant for our first item. Okay. Well, let's proceed then.
Okay. We'll go ahead and into the public hearing portion of our meeting. For each of the following items, the public will be given the opportunity to speak after a staff report, the chair will open the public hearing and invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to make any comments. Members of the public will be invited to provide testimony to the commission following an applicant. Speakers should state their name for the record and can address the commission for three minutes. After all the comments that we see, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will discuss the item and take appropriate action. And before we start, do I have any disclosures of ex parte communications?
Jeff, I believe we have elections first on the agenda before we get into the hearing.
There are. We haven't even really discussed that. Okay, but before we do that, we'd better get into the planning commission business. Planning Commission reorganization looks like we have the election of the chairperson and vice chair. The commission will select chairperson and vice chair.
I would like to nominate Mr. Jeff Van den Eyck for chairperson again. Can I do that?
I would be willing to.
There's no term limits on this, right?
I know.
Only if you vote him out. I'll second that.
Annette, do we do a roll call on that or do we have, do the vice chair at the same time?
Um, we can do the vice chair and then do one roll call at the end for both.
Okay. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I'd like for vice chair to be continued by Tori.
Thanks, Dennis.
You're welcome.
I'd second that as well. Okay, you've done an excellent job.
Why, thank you.
Annette, would you like to do a roll call vote on this?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Karanta?
Approved, yes.
Commissioner He?
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yeah.
And Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
So now we will. Are there any other things that I need to bring up in that? Am I missing something?
No, next ex parte and that's it.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and have discussions like ex parte on this item. Jason?
Yes, I do have some ex parte. I have a business that's across the street from the from the property being discussed. It is not, I have no monetary value invested in it. It doesn't affect my business in any way, so I don't believe there's any reason for me to recuse. And I've only had just cursory discussions with the owner, just being my neighbor, nothing of substance as far as the, the project is concerned.
Okay.
Greg? The item was presented to the design review committee and I heard some of the presentation during that. I believe that we'll be hearing the same thing tonight.
Okay. Greg, do you have any expert thing?
No, I do not.
Okay, Tori?
Yeah, I live very close to the proposed property as well, like across the street from Jason's business practically. So, but I don't have any monetary, like it doesn't really affect me at all. I can't see the property from my house or anything, but just wanted to disclose that.
Okay, yeah, I wonder, I mean, usually when you live within a certain area, it's perceived as a conflict, but.
That's fine. I'm happy to recuse myself from it if just for, you know.
I'm thinking about that. Yeah, I think.
Because I'm very close.
Five hundred feet.
Yeah, I think if you live within five hundred feet, you have to recuse yourself just because it's a personal property where you live, which is different than a business.
Sorry about that. We'd love to have you along, but it's probably for, yeah.
According to Google, I am probably right at the five hundred feet mark, five hundred, six hundred feet as the crow flies.
I'm happy to do a quick, well, I don't know if you want to say your address out loud, Tori, but maybe not. Maybe in that context it to me and I'm happy to just do a quick check.
Okay.
If you want to listen to the presentation and then.
Yeah.
Good idea. Good idea. We can do that.
Let's do that.
No problem with the business though, Phil?
No, not unless it creates a, you know, an economic impact to your business in a positive or negative way that's perceived from your business. I don't think that's the case.
I don't believe he's doing any car repair or I don't do it. I don't think it's in the same vein.
I mean, usually it's a conflict if you would benefit or if you would be damaged by any action that you take tonight. Or if it's perceived that way. I don't, I don't see that to be an issue myself, but I mean, that's up to you.
Yeah, I don't see how it would, it would affect me either way.
Okay.
He's already, he's already next door conducting business, so I don't think it's affected in any way.
Okay. Thank you.
My presentation or should we wait on Kelly?
Let's wait for Kelly's determination.
I mean, there's, yeah, we could, we could also start and then, I mean, either way, Tori, Tori can listen to everything. It's whether or not she takes part in the
Sure, in the vote.
The actual hearing, so.
Yeah, I am, I am saying that she is just over five hundred feet away.
There you go.
Very.
Okay, it seems like you can and as far as my expert day, I did, I did hear this at DRC and also I have rented equipment from the applicant and we did discuss his project before I even saw it coming for me and that was about it. Well, we go ahead and have our staff report. Mariah, are you giving that today?
I am, thank you.
No ex parte for me as well, just adding that. That's okay, just mine in the record.
Thank you.
Okay, let me go ahead and share my screen here. Can you all see my screen?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. So the applicant is the owner of a Tascadero Hayne Feed. They're expanding their business to include outdoor landscape and equipment sales. This is at sixty-five oh one Via Avenue. So the zoning map you can see here, the entire lot is seven point three six acres, but the area being proposed to be used for the landscape materials and equipment rentals is almost one and a half acres. This is in the industrial zone and again, it's right next to a Tascadero Hayne Feed and it's the same owner. It will be sort of a continuation of the business. So this is an aerial view of the entire site. You can see the whole site there in red. Again, that's a little over seven acres. The space being leased is that green sort of rectangle there at the bottom and then I've just outlined the existing structure that's on that site. That's an office building currently that you'll see pictures of later in the presentation. So a little bit of background about this property, if you've been following this property for a little while, there have been a couple of projects here. So in two thousand and eighteen, the planning commission approved a landscape yard. So the, the landscape yard was previously approved. There was an RV storage project that was proposed in two thousand and nineteen but was withdrawn. So it never actually made it to planning commission. Then in two thousand and twenty, there was an outdoor contract construction company that was approved by the planning commission. So some improvements have been completed on the site over the years. And the applicant is proposing now to use the site again as an outdoor sales yard for landscape materials as well as small equipment rentals. Since this is an equipment and supply yard with over ten thousand square feet of outdoor space, it does require a conditional use permit, which is the reason it's coming before you tonight. The project also includes construction of a retention basin, so that's probably the most significant change to the site. Otherwise, a lot of the improvements have already been done with the previous projects. So here we can take a look at the site plan. The you can see the areas that are going to be storing the landscaping there in the back, along the back fence there. These will include materials such as bark, sand, gravel, DG and base. These will be separated by six foot tall concrete barriers. These will stay a natural concrete gray color. There is proposed to be a small equipment rental area. This would be for small equipment such as mini excavators and different small tools that people can just rent out of that space. And then that last rectangle there is the location again of the existing building. So here we can see that building, I believe with the previous project, I want to say in two thousand and eighteen, that was painted green. It's a little hard to see here. Can see it better in later pictures, but it does fit in with the industrial character of Via Avenue. So the municipal code provides a set of design standards for these outdoor sales yards specifically. I've listed them all here, but I'll kind of go through them in the presentation. So the applicant is proposing a little bit of new landscaping. The municipal code only requires that five percent of industrial properties are landscaped. So it doesn't take too much and the applicant is meeting that requirement with the proposed landscaping. So there are some existing Chinese pistash trees between the existing parking lot and then the new sales yard. Between the parking lot and Via Avenue and in front of the property, there are new Chinese pistash trees that are being proposed to be planted as well as some ground cover and native shrubs. The applicant originally showed a grass or turf area that would be above the septic system. That property is on septic over there, but staff has added a condition that this be replaced with native drought tolerant vegetation and mulch. And so again, the landscaping that's being proposed does meet the requirements of the municipal code. And we've added that condition about vegetation and mulch. So moving on to fencing, that is another requirement from the outdoor sales yard code section. And the fences on the site are all existing, so the applicant isn't proposing to add any new ones. There's an existing six foot tall dog-eared redwood fence that goes around almost the entire lease area. In the front there, there is an existing chain link fence and then right in front of the property along Via is a four foot high existing steel fence. So the landscape yard is completely screened from Via Avenue from the right of way. And none of these fences are proposed to be changed. Just a small note about the trash enclosure. We don't have any details about exactly what it will look like. It won't be visible from Via Avenue, so staff isn't particularly concerned about the appearance. We have added a condition that this meet the current Cal Green regulations for the size of the trash receptacles that need to be stored there and that the design be approved by the community development department. And that would happen with the building permit. So here's some pictures that give you a little bit of a better idea. You can see in this top picture on the left-hand side, that's the existing steel fence, the driveway, I'm sorry, the driveway and parking lot are completely paved right now. And then there's a fence that completely screens the storage yard from Via Avenue. And then that second picture there is just looking onto the site. So you can see there's not too much there right now. And just a couple more pictures of the site. That bottom picture gives you a little bit of a better idea of the green color of that office building. So the conditions of approval are included in the staff report. We can talk about them if anyone has any specific questions or wants to go over them. One proposed change that I would like to make is to remove condition number eight. I think that was an old condition. I'm not sure what it's referring to. The applicant hasn't provided a sign design and there's no exhibit A actually that it's referring to. So I'd like to just strike that one out, but keep the rest of the conditions. None of the other ones would be changed. So the project qualifies for a class one categorical exemption under CEQA because it consists of leasing an existing private facility with really no expansion beyond the existing use over there. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution, allowing for the new business that includes outdoor sales and landscaping of landscaping material and equipment rentals based on findings and subject to conditions of approval. And then with that note about removing condition of approval number eight. So as always, the commission can approve modifications to the project. The commission can determine that more information is needed and refer the item back to staff or the commission may deny the permit. And staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Mariah. Do we have any questions of Mariah? Everybody, I don't see any, anybody raising their hand? If that is the case, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And we'll invite the applicant if he's on the line to address us if you'd like.
And just a reminder, if you're on the phone, go ahead and press star nine, I believe. Star nine will raise your hand.
Okay, since we're not hearing from the applicant, is there anybody else from the public that would like to make a comment on this? If you are on the phone, you can type star nine, otherwise raise your hand and zoom. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody that wants to make any comments on this. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any kind of discussion. Or a motion.
I would like to make a motion, please. And the motion was that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving U S E twenty-one dash zero zero eight three to allow a sales yard and equipment, equipment rental business in the industrial zone at six five oh one Via Avenue. And along with that, we would adopt the findings and the kitchen and the conditions as amended by staff by the removal of number eight.
Okay, Tori? Annette, can I get a roll call, please?
Did we strike number eight? I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Okay, thank you. Okay, here we go. I was just, that was vice chairperson King that did the second, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yeah.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Karanta?
Yes.
Commissioner He?
Yes.
And Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, well, congratulations to the applicant and wish them the best of luck in their new
expansion. Yeah.
They've actually been doing rentals already, but it'll be a good, well, except for the, they haven't done the materially. Yours, that'll be nice to have something close by my house. All right. Yeah, yeah. Anybody have any commissioners' comments or reports?
I do.
Victoria?
Yes, Chairperson Van den Eyck. I just wanted to give an update on the citizen rallied project called the Equality Mural Project in the downtown. We have three murals that are getting finished within the next month and then two more going in in the next couple of months. So we're making a lot of headway and I'm just really excited to see a lot more public art downtown.
Is the one on traffic way across from Colony Park, one of the quality murals with the birds?
Yes, the water color with the birds.
Wait, it's gorgeous.
Beautiful.
Yeah, she did so much within the last three days. It's worth a drive over.
It's been really fun watching it evolve. It's been really cool.
Oh, I bet, right where you are. Yeah, we're just, yeah, this is, it's pretty close to the proposed project that we just approved.
Yep, yep, and it's, it's very cool. It's very pretty and vibrant and much better than just a blank wall. So I'm glad that they decided to use that wall for that.
Brings that down town field, down traffic way and kind of.
Yeah, that was a partnership with an HOA and it was a little different than what we were used to doing. But it worked out because the Colony Park, it was just off of our boundary of downtown, so it'll be a walkable mural, a walkable public art project. So anyway, that was my. Rosalyn has a report too.
She approved it.
Learn how to say dad, dad. That's her report. Yeah. Thank you.
That's, that's great, great report. Anybody else? Any other reports? We'll turn some time over to Phil. Or Director.
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to add. I think from what I told you last time about our general plan update and all the big development projects that are happening about town. And you know, our potential funding for our downtown infrastructure enhancement plan, those are the key things that are happening right now. So it's, it's been a really productive year so far and we're only in February, so things are looking good in, in community development in terms of us having a more whole community from a commercial perspective, a housing perspective and just a quality perspective. So that's the key thing, keeping community, keeping quality, keeping it local. But things are going well, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
I, I do have a question. Go ahead, Dennis. You were first.
Yeah, I'm wondering about the response of the outreach meeting that the commission and city council had talking about the general plan and then the reach out to the community. Has there been any responses or anything that's encouraging this show that people are wanting to participate?
As they have interest in doing something with their own properties. So it's been difficult to get people engaged yet at this point about the general community and really where should we should be going, but we haven't even started our outreach process yet. And in fact, we're going to be going back to city council on, on March one, I think the date is, to go ahead and adopt our, our whole work scope and, and really nail the contract down. So this last meeting was about getting the contract together for the consultant, identifying all the tasks. And then we'll get into outreach, then we'll really get into it and really draw the community in. And if they won't come to us, we're going to go out to them. So there's no way to escape it. We're going to get, get your comments. We're going to find you. Yeah, whether we have to go to a park or to a community event or to a church or do it like we did with Talk on the Block, we're going to be out there for a year or more in a number of different opportunities. So we'll get a ton of feedback. I know we will.
Good.
Tori, why don't you turn some time over here for a question?
So I was just curious because I've been dealing with the traffic and it's supposed to go till May. What are they doing on traffic? Like they dug up the street and there's, were they replacing sewer lines or like, do you know what they were doing there?
The they, the proverbial they, who is they? So sometimes it's the water company.
Caltrans, I don't know, the guys in the white trucks.
So sometimes it's, sometimes it's the water company. Sometimes it's our, we are doing some sewer line work on traffic way. That's a great question for our public works division. I don't have them online tonight though, but there's been some sewer line, sewer line work on traffic wave recently. That's. But there's been some sewer line, sewer line work on traffic wave recently. That's what's been going on.
I've gotten to know Spaghetti Hill very well over the last couple of weeks as I wind my way around.
You know, that's a nice, that's a nice way to go. Rosario, cut through Rosario.
It's lovely. It is.
Yeah.
Your time, go slow. Yeah.
Don't speed, yeah.
Beautiful drive. Yeah, I do want to comment that they are doing excellent work. They're, they're working fast. And when they're done, it seems very, very well done. I've seen projects where, you know, you can hardly drive on the road when they're finished, but they seem to be doing a nice job. So let them know that.
That's, that's good.
Jason, did you have a question of Phil?
Uh, no, just Tori asked it. I just wanted to know if they were still on schedule to finish in May. It goes right by the street. A lot of people used to get into my business, and they're right there right now. And that little intersection, people are getting a little impatient around.
Yeah.
We, we should think, discuss putting a stop sign on that traffic way in Via because people going from Via to a traffic way oftentimes.
It's, it's hard to pull out when you're going up that hill and your car is on a hill, especially when you have a really old car, stick shift, and you're starting.
Or slow internet.
Yeah.
Pause like you did.
Sorry. Yeah. That's a whole different discussion about a stop sign that I'd have to have our public works director weigh in on. Stop signs are not as easy to put in as you would think. And I think Jeff can ask, you know, probably tell us about that. You think you'd want a stop sign there, but unless there's a warrant for a stop sign, it's difficult to do. And yeah, it's a whole conversation, a lot more difficult than meets the eye.
Yeah.
Although I could agree with you as a, as a driver, it would be great. But then if you put a stop sign in the wrong spot, people will just blow through it. And then you get worse issues, you know what I mean?
Yeah. I understand. That's your job.
See, your hands up.
Yes, it was about the joint meeting that we had. I was wanting to just take some time to digest it and kind of look through again at what some of the goals were at that meeting. And I guess I had a question for Phil. You mentioned March first is when they're, you're wanting to get approval for everything and really finalize the scope of work with the city council. I know that we talked about an element that was not mandated that we've, I think we've decided to not include it, which is the economic development subject by itself as a standalone. But there was other items on there. I think climate change was one, water was one, and there was, I think, one more, maybe healthy communities. And I guess I was reflecting on all the comments that were made about water and just curious. Maybe why we did not talk about that element at all. So it seemed like we really hashed through the economic development piece and we're, we had a good consensus going, but then the other ones, we didn't really pay much merit to. So I wanted to ask about that.
It feels like we ran out of time. We had such a long day that day. I wanted to get further in depth into those things. Those issues are still a lot off the table. We're going to talk about it again in a public hearing.
Add to the budget, and I know that Mayor Marino is the key on essentialism, so.
Even if the council decides not to create a whole separate element for some of these important topics, it doesn't mean that those important topics don't get addressed in chapters within the element. And that's how the town, like, right now, for example, we have a land use and open space and conservation element, and they're all in the same element, but there's specific chapters in that element that have specific policies in each section, and it gets just as in-depth. So, yeah, we'll have to see where that goes. I think we're waiting for some more feedback along those lines, and so is a consultant to refine that. I think they didn't really have in-depth conversation about those, but we probably still can. And we'll still talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, I just didn't know where that would actually happen because it seems like once we finalize the scope of work, you can't really go back and add.
No, yeah, no, once it's done, but it hasn't been finalized yet. When we go back to the council on the first, we're going to give them, okay, here's the basic, and then here's all the alternatives we could add. What do you want to do? And so we're still penciling in those alternatives right now based on the conversation that we heard. So.
So I guess my question, if I was trying to be succinct, is where would any additional room for commenting about that piece?
When we go, when we go to the city council, it's not going to be on consent. It's going to be a management report. We're going to provide a presentation and a report, and the council is going to have discussion and allow for public comments. So that's the time to do it. Now, I'll know in the next few days whether we're going to make March first. It may get booted to the next one because I'm still waiting for some information back from our consultant team. That's not ready yet, and I need to have that back in the next day because the report deadline comes up pretty quick, so.
Sure. Okay, well, thank you. I'll, I'll keep that, my ear to the ground on the March first. Would it be anytime before or did March first or a little later?
Um, I need to look at the calendar. Let's see. I'm making sure that March first is the right data. Through that data out there.
March first is our next planning commission hearing.
That's why I thought it was wrong.
You mean March?
So it's, it's actually.
Maybe.
After the second week.
Thank you. Thank you then. So it's the eighth. And it'll probably be early in the evening.
Dennis, you have a question?
Thank you.
Yes, Director, has any work been started on SB nine? Or has, is there someone in staff who's going to be doing that work or a consultant that will be doing that work?
Yep, we have it all. We have it all penciled out. We've got some great creative ideas. We're going to bring forward an ordinance that's going to combine SB nine with accessory dwelling unit ordinance to the planning commission and to the city council. March, April, April, May, somewhere in the next two or three months, it's coming forward.
Is there going to be any draft that'll be made available before coming to the commission? Or how's that?
Probably not. It's probably going to, we're going to have a draft staff report like we would for any item that's going to come to commission, and it's going to go straight in. And if you want to talk about it ahead of time, you could always set up a meeting with me and we can go through some stuff and really draft form.
Okay.
Or by email, we can talk, start talking about stuff. But, yeah, we're not going to, we're still working with our legal team and ironing out some little things with it. And we're still working with our draft, so it's not quite there yet. But if you have anything you want to weigh in on, I'd be happy to hear it.
Okay, and then June fourteenth, which still is our, is our sunset date on the interim ordinance.
Yeah, we'll have everything adopted before then. That's our plan.
Okay, so good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Phil, has there been any submissions for the California Fresh or that whole complex? Saw an article in the paper regarding.
Yeah, Del Rio Marketplace, they've got Valley Fresh Market signed on as the major tenant at the corner of Del Rio Alcuminia Real. We're awaiting the final submittal. We have a conceptual submittal right now that we provided comments to, and they're working on a complete submittal, and then that'll move forward to the DRC planning commission and city council. And it's a whole site plan that not only includes that, it's going to include some residential. It's going to include some office. It's going to include some retail. It's a whole really neat center. It's really good, what I've seen so far. So.
That's great. And have the businesses in the La Plaza. Excuse me, there was going to be an Italian restaurant, had they drawn, gotten TIs for that or?
Yeah, yeah, they, I think it's even been issued, if I'm not mistaken. It's pretty much done. So they're going to work on that over this summer. And we're waiting for some other tenants to come along. I think they're having some discussions with them now. And we're hoping that successful negotiations continue forward on other properties in the downtown. If you've noticed, the Plumb's Muffler Shop and auto, auto sales is for sale. If you know anyone who's got a great idea for that property, we'd love to help support that as a city. That's a prime non-conforming property. We'd love to see turn it into something else. And yeah, La Plaza is coming along nicely. I think they're going to ask that some of the units be allowed to be vacation rentals, and we're trying to work with them on that right now for that.
Did the muffler shop complain about lack of parking or having parking removed?
Yeah, but that's not the reason they're closing. I mean, the owner has decided to sell the property. The owner doesn't run the business. The owner has been leasing stuff for many, many, many years and finally has decided to sell. And the muffler shop has basically said, yeah, we're not interested in really continuing our business anyway. So it's been a mutual thing. So we'll see where that, where that goes.
I think we need another beer garden there. I don't think we have enough in town.
You never have too many beer gardens.
Yeah.
We, real beer gardens, you have to have growies outside that you use with your beer. Make nice fragrance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I got some good feedback from one of our former public works directors. I was on the phone with a former public works director, Steve Khan, yesterday, and he stopped that in downtown. He hadn't been here for years, and he was really impressed with all the things that were happening in Atascadero.
Nice.
What's, what's Steve up to?
Uh, he works for Cannon and Associates right now.
Oh, he's no longer a city or San Maria then?
No, he retired about two years ago from San Maria.
I've known Steve for forty years.
Wow.
Anyway, it's good to hear.
Any other comments for Phil? If not, then we'll go ahead and adjourn. Are we scheduled for May or March first? We have stuff scheduled already or?
I think we are. I'm trying to think what's on that agenda. I know we've got some things that are moving forward. Yeah, I think we have a review of a tool rental center expansion at the Home Depot.
Right, and there's a zone change too, Phil, the one that, the file that you have.
Yeah, for the plant development, if that makes it, I'm trying to get that done in time. We're still working with our city attorney on that one to add a plan development overlay zone to the property that the city owns next to Santanino Plaza, where we demolished the yellow structure recently. The city is going to be interested in selling that property for private development. And we want to guide that along.
Super. Well, it was good to see everybody. We'll go ahead and adjourn until March first.
Have a good night, everybody.
Bye bye. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.